Mr. Gilberto, you're all set too. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 7:59 PM. I'm joined by members Mr. O'Leary, Mrs. Gonzalez, Mr. Walner, Mistress and Mistress Dudo. If we could, please recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I do not see recording, but for those participating, for those members of the public participating, okay. Mr. Gilberto is recording. I do see, um, Rob is here from NOR Cam. I don't see that it's being recorded, but for those of you that are participating, either listening via phone or participating virtually with us, please remember that when you make comments during the meeting and you're not muted, we can all hear those comments and they're also being recorded. So if you have comments that come out of your lips instead of staying in your thoughts, please keep muted unless you're actually raising your hand to participate. Okay, so our first, um, order of business is board member reports. And we have plenty. Mr. O'Leary, why don't you start us off?
For now, thank you.
All set? All right. And Mrs. Gonzalez?
Um, yeah, I would just like to quickly acknowledge, um, our own Francine Coughlin, from North Reading, who is the owner of Bach &amp; Roll Canine Care and the founder of Rock &amp; Rescue, a nonprofit dog rescue. She was named Commonwealth heroine by the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women. Uh, she was nominated by Senate Minority Leader Brad Jones. She recently created the Hornets Against Hate Facebook group and helped lead the effort to organize a peaceful protest in the town common in memory of George Floyd. Um, we're very proud and fortunate to have such a giving and caring person in our community. I'd like to just acknowledge her.
Thank you. And I believe there's a march coming up on the July 8th. And probably Mr. Gilbert will be reporting on that too. Um, and I think that was also organized by Hornets Against Hate too. Um, Mr. Walner?
Um, yeah, on the same kind of topic, um, um, tomorrow night, a meeting with all of the people who wrote to us about doing something as a select board to deal with racial, cultural diversity issues in town. And so I'm having an informal session tomorrow with those four different entities, along with some of the people from CIT like Amy Luckwitz, Kim Menzeli, Mary Preney, Jen Ford. Um, and the, the goal is, this is a one-time deal for me, but the goal is to get them together, to get them talking together so that they can crossbreed and gain energy from each other. And to also, um, encourage them for the long run that, you know, they have to integrate. I'm suggesting that they integrate themselves with the existing government that we have in place. A lot of, uh, you know, energy is being devoted towards changing the school curriculum. That doesn't happen overnight. That takes a lot of effort if we even, you know, people think they're gonna have a chance to do in that. So I'm getting together with them to try to get some synergy between all of them so they can have progress, which I think the board, I'm doing this more as a private citizen than a board member, but last meeting, we were all highly supportive of seeing things happen in town. So hopefully that works out. Um, the, uh, the Council of Aging and the SSAT combined together, um, to, uh, they, they secured a $35,000 community grant. We went to the UMass Aging Lab to have them come back as consultants and to give us, um, their proposal. They did come back with a proposal. Um, we are going back to them again because it was all rearview looking and not, uh, making progress going forward. So if we're gonna have that kind of money, you know, yeah, we certainly need to look back and know where we are. But as important is to know how we're gonna drive forward that AARP initiative and how we're gonna lead that because if we don't include that, it's, it's just, you know, we're just kind of wasting our time. Again, these are, these are attempts to create long-term solutions to long-term problems. And if you don't have good leadership, then at the end of the day, you know, then it's not gonna work out. And so, you know, UMass has heard that, that challenge. They've never done this before, but they're gonna step back and give us a proposal or we'll, we'll split the community compact and find someone who can do it. I think those are the two biggest things going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walner. And thank you for coordinating that with the groups, all the different groups. And hopefully they can achieve what they're looking for in creating that committee. And Mr. Sudo, welcome to your first regular length board meeting. You've had two so far on your belt. This is number three, but this is our first, you know, long, longer term meeting. So welcome to you. You're kind of new, so you're gonna find out your assignments pretty soon, but.
Yes, so as of, uh, as of right now, I have nothing to, uh, nothing to report.
All right.
All right.
Well, welcome. Um, and I just want to, from the chair, say thank you to Mr. Murphy, to Dr. Daly, to the members of the school committee, to the town administrator, to the, um, to Clerk Stats, Chief Murphy, Chief Stats, to Mrs. Kane, uh, the members of the public facilities that were over there getting us set up, organizing our, I bet you I'm not wrong in saying that was the first town meeting where everybody was working tasks like that. And it was a little bit of a different process, but I really appreciate, and I, I think I speak for my colleagues in saying thank you to everybody that was a part of making that happen and making that a success for the town so that we could get our budget passed. So we really appreciate all of the effort that went into that, all the planning and all of the extra time that people took to troubleshoot the things that needed to be, to, that needed to be squared away in order for that to happen for us. All right. And, um, the next order of business is a COVID-19 update by Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the only update that I will offer is that, uh, the, the state has advanced the reopening into, to phase three. And so, um, there are a variety of different steps that'll take place over the coming weeks that are, are related to that, um, which we'll be working through. Um, you know, we continue to have a working group that's been established, although it's moved to bi-weekly meetings now, um, which includes all of the major emergency response departments as well as the school departments. Obviously, the school department, um, through the school committee and the superintendent are working through issues associated with reopening the schools. And, um, we've had, uh, more recently, a border health member participating in those calls. And I have tried to participate as, as, um, as, uh, as possible, as time permits. And we'll continue to work together on, um, on those, uh, those issues. Um, but that's really the conclusion of the update at this point in time. Um, I believe the border health will be having a regular meeting later this week. And if anything further comes out, we'll certainly continue to provide the updates to the community um, through our email, website, and our social media platforms.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. Do any of the members have any questions for Mr. Gilberto? Okay, seeing none, our next order of business is public comment. Is anyone attending that would like to provide public comment? Mr. Gilberto, I see none?
I don't see any, uh, any hands raised. Um, I see one guest shaking. Is that no? Thank you.
Okay. Um, I did skip it. Um, Mr. Walner, I see your chat. I'm getting a new glasses prescription, so that should help me with things, but, but we got to it, so.
No worries, no worries.
All right. Our next order of business is to consult with the town moderator, Mr. Murphy, regarding continuing the May 11, 2020 special town meeting. Votes may be taken. And Mr. Murphy is here. Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I should note, I was just corrected that there is not a border health meeting this week. So there may not be anything, um, from the border health, but we'll continue to provide the community with the, uh, the regular updates that we've been providing. Um, with regard to the special town meeting, um, the day after the town meeting last week, I spoke with the moderator and, um, you know, we, we had a conversation about what is still scheduled to be a special town meeting related to the Seven Akers poultry farm. Um, you'll recall that we had, um, in consultation with the moderator, moved that meeting out to Monday, July 27th at 7 o'clock PM. Um, you know, I, that was an action that I think took place some, somewhere around the end of May or early June. Um, you know, we have, uh, we have it on the agenda mostly because there are some steps that will be required, namely among them are mailing the, uh, the warrant to our residents so that they get it two weeks before that town meeting. What I, I think I was hoping we would be able to do is to coordinate the timing so that, much like for the annual town meeting, we're marrying, we're mailing a document that identifies a meeting that we're, we're hoping we'll be able to, um, to conduct and to, to actually hold. Um, and that we'll be able to provide information specific to that, uh, that meeting as well. Um, I, I think from the moderator, myself, um, the public safety director and the, um, town clerk, you know, we have had some conversations since last Monday's annual town meeting. And I, I think our feeling is that because of the likely, um, size of the attendance associated with the, the turkey farm properties, as well as, um, what may be a lengthier deliberation than what occurred the evening of the annual town meeting, um, that having it in the evening indoors in the gymnasium is, um, not necessarily something that we're, we're likely to be able to do um, on the timeline that, that we're looking at right now. And so that, that would leave us with the options of continuing to work with the moderator, and it would be his determination, obviously, um, to, um, to postpone the meeting uh, or, um, to look to see if there are alternatives for us to conduct the meeting, um, rather than, um, than postponing it. And I'm not even suggesting that it would be that date, but I more wanted to open a conversation about what our next steps might be able to be for that town meeting. Um, and so that we can begin planning. Um, you know, and there, there are, you know, options that we've looked a little bit at and that we would need to look further at. We don't necessarily need to even come to a conclusion in the discussion this evening, but I, I more wanted to open that discussion with the moderator here. We'd of course would be consulting with the border health once any determination is being made. Um, just, and just wanted to open this as a starting point. Um, and I say that because I think that we know there's a lot of uncertainty of what, what's gonna happen with regard to, um, the, uh, the pandemic and, um, the case numbers. And, um, you know, that the, part of that uncertainty is we just, we don't know when the, the public health emergency that we're in will, will end. We have the ability to hold off on having the town meeting until the conclusion and even after the, the, um, conclusion of the public health emergency. But again, we just, we don't know what that timeline is right now. Um, and, um, so I, I guess I bring that up only to sort of understand and maybe open a conversation about whether we wanna look to just continue to, to postpone or whether we wanna try to see if there's a way we could pull off the meeting. So I know that was a bit rambling, but that's a very detailed description of why it was on the agenda.
Mr. Murphy, any thoughts? What's your thoughts on this?
Well, the, um, just from the, I'll, I'll approach it just from the meeting perspective. Um, it's likely to draw a larger crowd than we had for the annual town meeting. Um, there are, I think, in the current, um, changes that have been made, that there are differences in the quorum requirements, if I'm not mistaken. So, um, we wouldn't have to have the 150, I believe, that we would, would be required. I mean, it really comes down to, um, are we, i- i- is the board ready to send the warrant? And is the board ready to, um, to make that, whatever that recommendation is? And, and move forward with it? I mean, I'm, um, I've been on, between the border health and the border select, and I've been on several Zoom meetings. And I'm amenable to what works for the community of North Reading. And I, I guess the only thing that, and, and I'm not, um, I spend most of my time in my office, which is where I am now, but I, I'm not plugged into, um, you know, that whole, um, that whole process in a, in a way that I could opine on that. But, you know, the, the, the folks who are trying to sell the property, um, you know, so, that, but that's not my, my role. My role would be to say, when we're ready to have that town meeting, I'll be ready to preside over that town meeting. And I wanna do so, um, in a safe and, and effective manner as we, we did last time, so. I don't know if that helps or if I answered the question.
I think so. I think, Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the moderator is correct, and I know, uh, Madam Chair, you're also well aware. Um, because of more recent legislation in the month of June, which, among other things, allowed virtual town meetings for representative town meetings, which does not apply for us, there's also an ability to reduce a quorum requirement that requires, uh, I believe, a public notice either seven or 10 days in advance and a vote of the select board to do so. Um, I, I think that's something that we would be recommending just so that we're able to conduct business um, here, uh, in this case. Um, but, you know, obviously, while it reduces a minimum, it does not establish a maximum. And so you still end up with a possibility of a, a more significant attendance level than what we, what we saw the other night at the, uh, at the junior annual town meeting.
And I think the other, um, key piece of this that we, I know we were working very diligently to try to make a determination on where, when, how for our, um, town meeting. And that was crucial to passing the budget with regard to the other special legislation in place. I believe we did receive a council's opinion with regard to the, the statutory deadlines under the special legislation, the time within which to act specifically related to the acquisition has been, will be extended to a period of time once the state of emergency is lifted. Um, so that's another key piece of this that we could potentially, you know, delay the special town meeting or we could potentially move forward seeking a reduction in that quorum. I think it's 10%, uh, no less than 10% of the, uh, minimum quorum required is what it is, right? Mr. Gilberto?
Yeah, that's correct, Madam Chair, yep.
So I think, let's hear from the, I'd like to hear from our colleagues on what their thought is on that. And, and then in another, another aspect of this, it became a lot of topic of discussion for us for the, the town meeting, um, which, how we handled that was having the virtual meeting in advance so that people could ask their questions. We could potentially do the same thing with this one. Um, but we also would definitely need that list minimum quorum requirement. And then there was a lot of discussion about indoor, outdoor. Hopefully, um, that indoor, we have a sense of the successful ability to carry it out indoors. And even though that was a monumental amount of work to redo it in the gymnasium, that, that could, that's another thing I think we have to consider. So let's just, and Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would add that, you know, that is something that, that we've discussed and, you know, we have not talked with the board of health itself with regard to this issue. But, I mean, I think we're all aware that, you know, that they were, um, they were not, they, they did not recommend the town meeting be held, um, indoors. I, I think for, you know, a number of the arguments and, and reasons that we had had to propose an indoor location, that, one of them was the expected crowd size and the, the duration of the, the discussion as a result of a concerted effort on the part of this board to minimize the warrant to only, um, essential and time-sensitive, um, business. You know, given that this deliberation is a bit more complex and because of the butter impacts and the likely increase in the size of the crowd attendance, um, I think, you know, we're sort of looking at options for something that would need to be either outdoors or in a larger venue that might not necessarily be here in North Reading as well. And so I do wanna put that out there. And we have not, you know, we, I, I don't wanna say that we have the answer at the moment, but I, I think in, in anticipation of where we are, where, where we are at and with one indoor meeting under our belt, you know, we started to look ahead to say, okay, what, what might our options be? So I, I only would add that. And thank you, Madam Chair, for letting me speak again.
All right. Mr. O'Leary, any thoughts?
Yeah, I think we should, you know, obviously move forward with the special town meeting sooner rather than later. As the town administrator pointed out, you know, we don't know what's going to, what the, uh, future of this whole pandemic is going to bring, you know, whether there's gonna be a spike in, in cases and a throttling back of, of, you know, the phasing here, or, you know, we just don't know. So it's, uh, to me, I think it's, uh, we're, we're pretty much in a position where, you know, already scheduled to have the meeting in, uh, in May. Um, you know, I, I think we should proceed on a timely basis and have it sooner rather than later. I think we should, uh, certainly consider, if we're gonna consider an outdoor setting, which I'm not opposed to, but just I would be, uh, I, I believe it should happen on like a Saturday morning rather than, you know, when you have it in the afternoon or evening, you're subject to, uh, this time of year, you know, thunderstorms and weather conditions, um, getting worse as the day goes on with the heat. Um, so again, I think a Saturday morning outside, uh, may be a, a good option for this particular, um, town meeting. And again, I, I agree. I concur that it's gonna be a little more interest in, in this town meeting than in the, the annual one that we pared down. So that being said, you know, I would be in favor of moving forward sooner rather than later. And, uh, not opposed to considering an outside venue, but I think it should be a Saturday morning, you know, 10, 11 o'clock.
Take the time.
Before things heat up.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mrs. Gonzalez?
Um, I agree. Uh, last meeting I was opposed to outdoor, but I, I felt we weren't gonna get a big crowd. And I felt that it was, would be doable to be inside. And we were lucky we did because of the weather that night. Um, but I would not be opposed to outside for this because it's, um, I think it is gonna draw a bigger crowd. Um, I like the idea of people doing the public comments and asking their questions ahead of time. Um, it might speed it up a little bit if people can get things answered ahead of time. I think that was a good idea. Um, I'm not opposed to a Saturday morning, but if we're gonna do it in that same week, I won't be here on that Saturday. So that, that would be an issue. That would be the 25th. Um, instead of the 27th, I wouldn't be here on the 25th, just so that's out there. But other than that, I would not be opposed, um, to a Saturday. I think that would be fine. Um, those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. And Mr. Walner?
Yeah, I, um, I'm also in agreement that it probably should be outside. The only question, question I would ask is, um, you know, if it does rain, uh, and there's no tent, you know, what do you do? Do you bring your umbrella and, you know, go through it? Or can you delay it? Or can you have a rain date? Go ahead, Michael. I see your hand up. It's just a practical question, that's all.
Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I think that the thinking was, and again, you know, just as we tried to look at what our options might be, I think our thinking was to choose the, the next possible Saturday from that July 27th date and anticipate that we would, you know, look for a good weather day. And if the weather appeared that it was gonna be prohibitive for the meeting to occur, then we would work with the moderator and with the board and the board of health and recommend, um, a delay to the following Saturday. Um, the window is tight in August in, in that, um, we have three Saturdays. Uh, the first, 8th and 15th, that, that I think we were sort of looking at. And again, I'm saying this not having nailed down a venue at this point, but for sort of discussion purposes. And I, I think our thinking was if we could pull it off for that August 1st, then we would sort of have three bites at the apple. Um, if we can't, then we would at least have two bites at the apple on the 8th and the 15th. Uh, I'm leaving out the 22nd because, and the 29th as well, because we would be, and I think those dates are right.
Yeah.
I wonder if I'm, but I'm going from memory. Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Um, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that, I, I know from talking to the town clerk who was on the call here this evening, um, they'll be in early voting for the state primary. And they are required to be open, um, I believe, Saturday, the 22nd and the 29th. Um, so, you know, that, that would pose a challenge for our electoral, election staff to, to pull the meeting off on, at that day because it would be in conflict with the early voting, um, for the primary. So, but we do believe that there could be a window, um, that could be there. And again, you know, notwithstanding needing to identify the right facility.
So I, I think, um, the, the weekend before, I know this actually, that the school is already planning the graduation ceremony outdoors on the 20th. So we'll kind of have a test run with them, um, and spacing out. I believe they're gonna be spacing out spaces. They are lim, I believe they're gonna be limiting the number of attendees to your immediate family members, which is a bunch in my case, but that's beside the point. And there's a lot of four and six family, family member families that are gonna be there. But there, I think that we'll have a, they'll have done this before. If we're, if we wanna go ahead and work with them again on the field. And I think to Mr. Walner's point, when, when we talked about this with the regular town meeting and talking about inclement weather, we were gonna have to have a backup plan inside the school. So maybe we have the backup plan of that. If we did pick a day to move forward that Mr. Murphy agrees with, we'll, we would just do, go along the same, the same path that, uh, Mr. O'Leary suggested for that, which was in the gymnasium, which we know worked out, um, okay, and had a quite a bit of space that could hold more people. And then the, there was actually two spaces set up there for a second, secondary room. So I think the log, the logistics can definitely be, um, you know, taken care of. Did you have any other questions, Mr. Walner?
No, I just, the other thing I would suggest, no, we have a backup as good where we can punt if we need to. Um, the other thing is I would start earlier than, I, I just think we should start at 8:30, 9 o'clock because at 10 o'clock, that sun is beating down and we're gonna be in the, you know, and it never gets started at 10. So if we start at 10, it starts at 10:30. So let's get real, right? Let's start early and, you know, let's try to get people out of there well before 11 because if it's hot, you know, nobody's gonna wanna stay and have a good, open discussion.
One other comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one other comment in relation to the, uh, reduction of the, of the quorum. I think we should avail ourselves of that opportunity and drop it to the 15 instead of 150. And again, that would provide the, the moderator more opportunity to adhere to another session. So if it does rain, we can get 15 people there to make a motion to move it to a specified time and date. And I think we should avail ourselves of that opportunity too. And that would probably be at our next meeting, I would assume, Mr. Gilberto, correct?
So.
No, he's on mute.
Sorry about that. Through you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I think that the thinking was to try to get some feedback in, in this fashion here and maybe take the steps to try to, um, come back with a, you know, a, a plan that reflects what we've heard this evening. Um, and again, we've taken some initial steps and to understand what our options might be. But I think the thinking is on January, on, on July 20th, your next regular meeting, that we would sort of formalize everything, including if it be the will of the board, advertising a hearing for reducing the quorum requirement, um, as well.
I think also just to add to that, because I pulled up the special legislation just for our edification and that we can get a firm answer to this. But I think there's some, some timelines in terms of our vote. It has to be pre, it has to be published in advance that that's what we're considering doing. And, um, so that might be one vote that we should take is if, as a board with, in working with Mr. Murphy, we think that that's necessary, then we should vote this evening to, you know, proceed with the reduction, you know, that, that we're anticipating doing that and follow the legislation. It says that it, you have to, um, the select board, it shall publish notice of its intention to consider an adjustment not less than seven days before the vote of the select board. not less than seven days before the vote of the select board. Um, so if that's what we want to do, I'm not saying vote to do that, but I'm saying, you know, vote to proceed. If that's what Mr. Murphy agrees with us to do, vote to proceed to publish that. And then at our next meeting, which we do have a next scheduled meeting, is to put that on for a vote of the board. I think that's how the legislation reads, but you can fine tune that with our attorney. Um, and then there's another requirement under the special legislation, not less than ten days after the vote to adjust the quorum, our town clerk has to notify the Attorney General that that's been done. So I think there's all, you know, kind of procedural requirements of us. And let's, let, let's hear from Mr. Studo on his thoughts.
Um, I won't speak to the logistics. I can, you know, leave the hard part to Mr. Gilberto on that one. Uh, however, I do agree with Mr. O'Leary that as soon as it's safe to do so, and if it is, I don't think we should do any further delay just so from a standpoint of just fairness for all the players involved, from Mr. Coviallo, uh, the sellers and the town. So I, I just think that if there's a way to do it safely based on the new guidelines from the state and Board of Health and, you know, their opinion that, uh, I do agree it should be done sooner rather than later. And then, uh, I definitely agree with what Mr. Wallner said that, um, I'm out here with my kids and by ten, ten-thirty, you are, uh, if you're in the sun, you know, you're, you're going to be in a real hurry. So the worst thing would be that, especially if the quorum, uh, you know, we don't vote for the quorum to be lower. The worst thing would be that people leave before it's complete. And then, you know, I, I've seen some interesting things in three town meetings I've been to. So maybe a Saturday morning, you know, before nine o'clock with a backup plan to the gymnasium sooner rather than later.
Thank you. And I, I mean, I, I actually would concur with it being outdoor. If we can agree to, um, move forward with it, if, if Mr. Murphy, Mr. Murphy's in agreement to a reduction of that quorum, if it's permitted, and we can back, back into that timeline. Do we have enough time? You're not going to have me on August first. So I just want to give you that heads up too. So in terms of timing and a Saturday, and I'd like to get Mr. Murphy's thoughts on that. Mr. Murphy, are you, do you think that we should be, um, proceeding with, uh, publishing to reduce the quorum at the special town meeting?
I, I would certainly recommend that you, um, go through the process to reduce the quorum. That, and, and I forget who said it, but, um, I mean, if we don't get a hundred and fifty, we can't call the meeting to order to postpone the meeting to another time in the rain. So I would certainly recommend that as a first step and to start that, you know, sort of now, so that that's, that's there, so that the quorum requirement isn't there. And that way we can work on the, the venue and, and the date and the time and it that works for everyone. And, um, we can also, you know, you don't have to, you can postpone for, um, that, that day or night to the next day or night, or you can postpone to the next Saturday or whatever works and, and we still have to find the venue. So. But I, I would think that's a, a great, great first step. Last several ti, special town meetings, I know this issue is different, but last several special town meetings, we've had a few issues.
And do you think, um, are you more inclined, I think you are more in, in, inclined to an outdoor meeting for our town meeting? Are you in more inclined towards outdoor for this meeting if the, if it can be planned properly and?
Yeah. So I, I was, I was more inclined initially to outdoors for the annual town meeting until I took a look at the venue, took a look, took a look at the timeframe and, and the topography and the parking and all those things. And I didn't know if it would work. A couple of things I've heard tonight are, um, the, the, the graduation, they're going to try it on the, on the twentieth, which I can go observe from afar to see and hear how that all, how that all works. So, um, I mean, clearly outdoors is safer than indoors having, so between the meeting I had with you when I was sort of leaning towards the outdoors. I then, because that's my job, I attended the meeting with, uh, Mr. Gilberto and Barbara and Chief Murphy and Chief Stats and, and others to plan an indoor town meeting. And when I left that meeting, I felt one hundred percent confident that we would be safe. And my wife's in healthcare, so I get it ingrained in me all day long. So, um, I felt that the plan we had was safe, in particular because I knew the size of the crowd we were likely to have. Because we don't have a big crowd for the annual town meeting anyway, and the warrant was pared down. So, but with this, I don't know what the, the attendance will be. But I think opening, uh, reducing the quorum requirement, I think, would be an important piece of the puzzle, in particular if we do go outside and it rains.
So I think, I think in terms of what we need to do tonight, at least we have sufficient time to be able to, um, you know, vote to publish that. If you need a vote, Mr. Gilberto, or do you just need a consensus of the, of the members to publish that it's our intent to take a vote at our next meeting to reduce the quorum? And do you have enough time to publish that before our next meeting? It's seven days in advance of the vote. So.
Madam Chair, through you. So, you know, based on what I'm hearing is the intention here, we would, uh, work to put in an ad in the, in the newspaper, um, for this coming Thursday. Um, with regard to the intention of the Board to vote, that would get us, I think, ten days or eleven days in advance of the next regular meeting of the Board on July twentieth. And I believe would get you into compliance with the statute for taking that action on reducing the quorum. Um, so I, I think that I, I've got, you know, I've got, I feel like I understand the guidance with regard to that issue.
Okay. No vote necessary, then?
I, I think at this point, um, that there will, there will be a vote necessary on July twentieth, though, yes.
Of course, of course. But in terms of, you have the consent of the membership to move forward with that publication, right? Right, Mr. O'Leary? Correct? Yes. I can't hear you. Do you, you have, I think you, you were in favor of reducing the quorum, correct, Mr. O'Leary? Muted. You're still muted. We can't hear you.
I, I am, but I, but I'm, I'm still in favor of, uh, I, I think it's important for us to have a motion as guidance for the record. So having said that, Madam Chair, I move, after having consultation and getting the approval of the moderator, that the select board publish a notice of its intention to reduce, uh, or otherwise adjust the quorum requirement for the scheduled special town meeting, in which the date now is it July twenty-seventh currently? I think it's whatever it is. Anyway, right. But I think it's a point that we, we do have a motion stating that we've consulted with the, uh, with the moderator, received his approval. The select board that we publish a notice of, of our intent to reduce the quorum for the upcoming scheduled special town meeting.
Second, okay. And I have a motion in a second and for purposes of discussion. Mr. Gilberto, I did not see a date specific in the special legislation. And I'm concerned that if we, if we say reduce a quorum on June twenty-seventh, and then we continue it to August fifteenth, that we would have to take that vote again. So should we just be qualifying it for a reduction in the quorum of the special town meeting for, um, purposes of acquisition of, should we just relate, be relating it to the particular business that we're going to be intending to handle or should we put the date certain?
So, Madam Chair, our understanding is that this meeting will actually for, forever be known as the May eleventh, twenty-twenty. Even though we're talking about having it in July and in all likelihood, August. Um, so I, I think that if you worded it as the May eleventh special town meeting regarding Seven Acres Turkey Farm, that would be sufficient.
Okay. All right. And or any, and or any, any continued, continued special meeting date? Something like that? Cover everything. Um, okay. So I have a motion by Mr. O'Leary. I do hope Jane got captured all that. That's a tough one. And I have a second by Mrs. Gonzalez. And any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. O'Leary. Mrs., Mr. O'Leary was an I. Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
And, and your Pelle is aye. So that's unanimous. We've been, we'll be moving forward to be publishing that. And then that'll be a vote on our next, um, next agenda, next meeting agenda. The second aspect of this, I think, is, um, where we heard sort of a consensus. And, um, I think what Mr. Murphy is really advising us to do, which makes a lot, whole heck of a lot of sense, is get with the, you know, the appropriate, um, parties here would be school committee and, um, Ms. Dr. Daly again, and, um, see how we can make this happen and where we can make this happen. You know, I think we were, you were anticipating wanting to publish the warrant with the two warrant articles related to the acquisition. So, um, I don't know as yet if we can determine the place, uh, for certain and the date and the time for certain at this point. I know that's what you were thinking, we, you wanted us to do, right, Mr. Gilberto?
I, I really wanted to start the conversation. I, I did not expect that we would be able to finalize that this evening. Um, that says we, we are, because of the time it takes to print the warrant and the many, the many copies of it, and then deliver it to the post office for distribution here in town, we, we end up with what, what, what turns out to be about a three and a half week lead time. So the, the sort of conundrum that I'm going to find, that we're going to find ourselves in is, you know, we, we get to July twentieth and we're consulting with the moderator and if have consulted with the Board of Health and we're trying to finalize. Um, you know, we're, we're going to be pushing that date further out into August. So I'm, I want to talk with town council, but I, I, I'm almost kind of feeling like we ought to mail the warrant. Um, and maybe mail it and identify it with a, you know, highlighting the dates that it's been continued to and noting that it is going to be continued again. And like we have done in the past, pushing out that information. Because I, I don't want to, because of delay, take any dates off the table for, um, the Board and the moderator to consider for actually holding the meeting, um, if, if that, that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. O'Leary.
Question, Mr. Gilberto, because I think it was suggested, uh, the last go around too, is to just use the, uh, high school, middle school property as the venue, as opposed to specifically the gymnasium or the auditorium, or the performing arts center, or the football field. That way we could publish the warrant and then once the venue is nailed down, assuming that it's on school property, the high school, middle school property, uh, we can then, uh, push that information out. And that way you could keep your timelines and, um, explore the opportunities.
I, I think that that's a, a, a good option for us. Um, it's the one thing I would be concerned about is the, obviously the date. We, we can get it in the mail to people before July twenty-seventh. I'm not worried about that. Um, but I, 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 I don't expect that we would be having the meeting that evening and I can't, I, we won't be able to get it to residents more, two weeks or more before that July twenty-seventh meeting. So now, what I'm struggling with is we don't, we don't have a date to work off of. And I don't want to pick a date and then have it not be the date either, because we still have some legwork to do.
Again, I would, again, suggest that you pick the first of the eighth, you know, and pick one in consultation with the moderator even tonight, so you can put it in. And again, we would then have a contingency plan to continue it, should the weather not permit or you needed a backup plan. It, it sounds as though the, it's either the first of the eighth, as soon as you can get anything out and done and noted, probably with proper notification. For us being even tight.
And first, first is not available. I won't be available on the first. So.
August eighth certainly gives us plenty of time to get the mailings done. And then, uh, it would give the moderator an opportunity to, uh, sign some more paperwork that he's getting used to signing his life away on. You know, as far as, you know, extending the July twenty-seventh to August eighth. And we just, no matter what date we pick, we're going to, we're guessing on the one. So.
Madam Chair?
Okay. Yes, Mr. Gilberto.
Um, I, I, so the Public Safety Director and the Town Clerk are, are both on here. Um, I, I would be inclined to say we, we issue it dated May eighth, um, at, it sounds like nine o'clock AM at the.
August, August. We already missed May eighth.
Or August eighth, um, at nine o'clock AM at the middle high school, uh, property or something worded to that extent. But I, I would like to ask the Town Clerk and the Public Safety Director just for any, anything that they wish to add to that, if that's okay?
Yes, and I, I think we need to, how does, because it's already scheduled, technically speaking, right? It was May eleventh and the moderator continued it. So does, are we jumping the gun by deciding now before the moderator continues it again? Or what, what is the proper process for that?
Your vote would be to recommend to the moderator a, a date, time and location this evening.
Great.
What I'm looking to do is to make sure that I, you know, we, we, we.
Yes.
We do have some more work to do to nail down the location, but for purposes of mailing a document to residents, I think what's been proposed makes sense. But I, I do want the Town Clerk and the Public Safety Director an opportunity. And I would just note, they're not here this evening and they are not having a meeting this evening, but we would be seeking to consult with the Board of Health as well as is required under the statute.
And then the other important aspect of this is I think this, the school department, Dr. Daly, they, it is COVID nineteen. And, uh, you know, we have not had the restrictions lifted and we haven't even, uh, um, I'm assuming they're assuming that we were simply going to continue this until a later date when the state of emergency is terminated. But, so they may not even be aware that this is what our intent to do is, and we really haven't included them in the discussion of this either. So.
You're absolutely right, Madam Chair. Absolutely.
That's another factor to consider. But yes, if, if clerk, Madam Clerk, are you, you're on mute. And I think, let me see here.
I'm here now.
Okay, great. All right. Your thoughts?
Um, I, I do think we need to get something out, uh, in the mail just to make sure that we don't miss the deadlines. You know, the moderator can issue a further continuance to August eighth, um, as the chosen date. And I think the, um, venue being the high school, middle school property, as we had brought up before, um, is a good idea. So it's not limited to either, you know, the outside or the inside. Um, so I do think, I do think it would be a good idea if the Board is choosing to move forward on this to, to try to, uh, set a date. Uh, as long as the school department is in agreement to us using their venue and, um, start to work to proceed to it because it will take a lot of planning.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have a Public Safety Director, Chief Murphy, with us as well. Any other thoughts, Chief Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, so we are working with the schools at this point regarding graduation. So we should have a lot of logistics down at that point. So we should have a lot of logistics down at that point. Parks and Rec would need to be involved as well. For their property. So, other than that, I don't have much more to add at this point.
Um, Chief Murphy, that, it's going to be outdoor, right, on the field?
The graduation is?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Point, yes.
Tended or not tended?
That, I do not believe it is going to be tended. They're, they're trying to utilize the whole field, um. Based upon the amount of, of, um, students graduating. Um, but we're still working on it, but they, they just don't have a tent big enough for the whole field, so. Um, I have to check the operational plan. I'm not sure if there's an actual rain date yet, but, um. We're working out the final logistics now.
And I have one more question for you, Chief Murphy. Have they worked out, um. A, you know, podium for the superintendent and, you know, i- individuals that are attending. Like that, or have they, a sound system or anything of that nature worked out?
Yeah, that's all been worked out, um, by the schools. Um, we don't have much input into that. They, they're working on that logistics. We're working on the, um, the public safety end of it parking, um. Doing what we can to help the, the students and family, um, stay as separated as possible, um. You know, under the guidelines of the governor's orders. Um, th- there is a, a, a pretty detailed plan in place. I believe they are going to be releasing it. Shortly if they haven't already. I thought they did. Um, but there, there will be a plan detailed to the public soon.
Okay. So, in that, now, I'm just asking you because it, it's, it's new, this would, this is new to all of us, so just to kind of get our. You know, first thoughts wrapped around, how, how could this be possible, even though we kind of went through this exercise for the annual town meeting? Um, just trying to figure out outdoor, indoor. I think it helps to kind of. Get us thinking about it like Mr. Gilberto wants us to do. All right, so are we, uh, prepared as a board to, I think, based on the recommendation, are we prepared as a board to pick a date? Pick a date, uh, while we have Mr. Murphy available and pick a time and at least. We'll be able to, you know. You know, have something advertised. Does August eighth work for everybody? That works for me.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy, does that work for you? Kind of hinges on Mr. Murphy. You're traveling. That's all we need. That's all we need.
I'll come to North Reading for that, so don't worry. It works for me.
Does I, alright. Um, and, uh, Mr. O'Leary, does that work for you? Okay, Mr. Walner?
Yeah, I can make that work.
Mr. Studo?
Yes.
All right, and, um, Mr. Walner said nine, Mr. O'Leary said eleven.
I said ten or eleven, but no, I'm, I'm good, I'm good with nine. I'm good with nine. That makes sense. It does get warm in the morning, particularly not.
I'm asleep at nine on a Saturday.
You're not going to get a big crowd.
But I'll be there.
We'll prop you up.
All right, just, does nine work for everybody? Will that be good? All right. Um, it's, I think that, so that, Mr. Gilberto, does that give you a direction in terms of how we're going to proceed? And in terms of, um, the recommendation? Perfect.
Motion, there is a motion number seven if Mr. Studo wants to read it, just.
I am dying to read it. I've been just waiting to put in this date. I've been holding the pen like this.
All right, okay, so do I have a motion?
Uh, Madam Chair, I move to recommend to the town moderator that the special town meeting scheduled for May eleven, twenty twenty. Continue to June eighth, twenty twenty. And further continue to June twenty nine, twenty twenty. And further continue to July twenty seven, twenty twenty. Be further continued, um, to August eighth at nine AM, twenty twenty.
Great, I have a motion by Mr. Studo. I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion, Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, could we just add, uh, clarifying, the location would be at the middle high school property?
And so amending the motion to include the location.
I heard Mr. Studo say that.
Amending the motion to include at middle school location. Middle school slash high school location.
I'm, I'm actually wondering, because there is sort of a funny arrangement with the ownership of that property. Um, the football field itself is actually. Within but not part of the middle high school property, so we just.
Part of the enterprise for Hillview, right?
We, we just want to say one eighty nine, one eighty nine Park Street, which I believe is the address of the middle high school.
Okay, at one eighty nine Park Street.
Okay, thank you. So I have a motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary, and any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. O'Leary. Miss, Miss O'Leary is an aye. Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Walner? Mr. Studo?
Aye.
And Manu Pelley is aye. Okay, and thanks, Mr. Murphy. And clerk stats. Madam Clerk, can you, I, I forgot this in our board member reports, but while you're on the, on the call with us. You also had a number of, um, volunteers that showed up. Um, Mr. Gilberto reminded me because Maureen Stevens was there as one of the volunteers. Could you tell us the names of all those volunteers that helped us with that annual town meeting? You had quite a number of individuals that came and helped us out with that.
Um, I'll, I'll rely on Mr. Gilberto too for his memory, but, um, Mr. Collins, our HR director. Sharon Kelleher, our, our librarian, as you mentioned, Maureen Stevens, the Parks and Recreation Operations Director. Jennifer Ford, the Youth Services Director. Um.
Mark Hamel, the building superintendent?
Mark Hamel, the building superintendent.
You had your, uh, you also had your regular, you had some of your regular workers that were.
Absolutely. My, my assistant town clerk, Janet Murphy, was there. And our dedicated election staff, Pat Fillmore. Um, we had Carol Clary, we had Jean Fitzgerald. Nancy Brown and Camille Welch. And Rose Vitale.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure we acknowledge them.
Thank you. They deserve acknowledgement.
Appreciate that they all showed up for that, um, and helped to make that a success for us as well. Ms., Mr. O'Leary?
Maybe someone else, bye.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Murphy, too, for joining us. And I think we.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
So our, our next order of business is a vote on the recommendations on the special. Town meeting warrant articles, and I think we're, we're going to pass over this, Mr. Gilberto. So we, we can. We'll move on to a review of the liaison assignments. Um, and, uh, Mr. Gilberto, let's do a quick rundown of it. Mr. Gilberto sent this in our packet today and, um. I updated some of the names and, um, I. I think a couple of them are kind of non-active, but I think it's important to have the members remain as a liaison in case they do become active. So we've left some of those to, to be, so some of those are still on here. So, Mr. O'Leary will have the Board of Health. Mr. O'Leary have the Board of Registars. Um, Mr. Walner, Mr. O'Leary will have the, uh, Cable TV Advisory Committee. Mr. Walner will serve as liaison for Commission on Disabilities. Mrs. Gonzalez will be the CIT liaison. Mr. Studo will be the Community Planning Commission Liaison. Mr. O'Leary for the Conservation Commission. Mrs. Gonzalez for the Constables. Mr. Walner, Council on Aging. Mr. Studo will be the voting member on the Economic Development Committee and Mrs. Gonzalez will be the associate member. Mr. Studo on Energy Conservation Committee. Um, Manu Pelley is Finance Committee. Mr. Walner, um, Marmack Valley Regional Transit Authority. Miss, Mrs. Gonzalez and I will be, um, on the fi- the liaisons of the Financial Planning Team. Mr. O'Leary on the Hillview Commission. Mr. Walner on Historic District Commission and Historical Commission. Mr. O'Leary liaison to the Housing Partnership. Mr. Studo for Information Technology Advisory Committee. Um, I'll be with the Infrastructure Committee. Mr. Studo on the Ipswich River Watershed Advisory Board, uh. The liaison to that. Mrs. Gonzalez for the Veterans Events Committee. And for the Fourth of July Committee. Mr. Studo for the Land Utilization Committee. Uh, Local Emergency Planning Committee, Library Trustees and MAPC Representative, I'll be continuing in those assignments. Martin's Pond Reclamation Study Committee is Mr. Walner. MBTA Representative, Mr. Walner. Mobile Home Rent Control Board, Mr. O'Leary. The Reading, North Reading Chamber of Commerce Representative, Mr. Studo. North Reading Cultural Council, North Reading Forest Committee, Mr. Walner. North Reading Housing Authority is Mrs. Gonzalez. Um, Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocation School Committee Rep is Mr. O'Leary. Recycling Committee, Mrs. Gonzalez. RMLD Advisory Board Member, Mr. Studo. School Committee is me. Mr. O'Leary for Secondary School Building Committee. Mrs. Gonzalez and I will be the contacts for the State Representative. The State Senator. Town Administrator, Mr. Walner, uh, continuing his duties with the Taxation Aid Committee. Uh, Town Council, Town Moderator, Town Treasurer. Again, I'll be continuing in that. And Capital Improvement Planning Committee will be Mrs. Gonzalez and I. Mrs. Gonzalez and me. Veterans Memorial Committee, Mrs. Gonzalez. And Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Studo will be working on the Water Waste Water Planning Advisory Committee and the Water Commission. Zoning Board of Appeals will be Mr. Studo and Youth Services Committee will be Mrs. Gonzalez continuing in that. And that is in your packet and I think we'll have to update the website with those. I think, I saw some of the, some of the, our board was changed, but. You also post this online, right, Mr. Gilberto?
I believe it's posted on the website, yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. All right, are we all set?
I guess, just.
Oh, Miss, Mr. Walner?
Yeah, I, I think it's just probably a typo, but on the Cable TV Advisory Committee. I don't think you need both Steve and I on it. It's, uh.
You know, you were both on it and I, I, I. I can, I can take one of you off and swap you out with a different committee. I think they were both of you are on it as we were negotiating the, um, contract. And I just, I didn't take you off of it, but I, I'm happy.
I'd be happy to have him handle the whole thing.
Mr. Gilbert, Mr. O'Leary, if you wanted to, I can swap you out with something else. I was trying to keep it even, Mr. Walner, so.
Just, just, you know, just having paid attention to that committee.
Yeah.
Been highly active, so.
I mean, some of the assignments are going to be pretty, pretty active. And so, and, you know, for example, Mr. O'Leary is probably going to be pretty active with Board of Health as we're in COVID nineteen era. And also, Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Studo are going to be pretty active with the wastewater, wastewater stuff, so.
And then I just have one other request, um, is the, uh, Community Planning Commission. I have gone to practically every meeting in the last four or five years. And I'd like to at least be considered to be an alternate for that group, um.
Yeah, they're not, they're not voting members and I, I, um, I have Mr. Mr. Studo handling that. I don't think it precludes you from going to the meetings at all. Um, and Mr. Studo will be serving as a liaison to that, so. Um, you, you could still continue and continue to go to those meetings. Okay. So our next order of business is. Legal bills, which we're also passing over, right, Mr. Gilberto?
There are a couple of motions that will require action, um, but the ones related to Attorney Detulla do not require action.
Okay, all right, so we do have, we do have some motions.
And it requires.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for May twenty twenty in the amount of sixteen thousand, four hundred seventy dollars and forty seven cents. As follows. General, ten thousand, seven hundred sixty six, forty seven. Labor, four thousand, six hundred ninety nine dollars and fifty cents. Twenty Elm Street, six hundred four dollars and fifty cents. American Arbitration, four hundred dollars. And SSBC, three hundred seventy dollars and fifty cents for a total of. Sixteen thousand, eight hundred forty dollars and seventy cents. I have a question before. Uh, the two numbers are different. Is there one, is there a reason for that, Mr. Gilberto, why? Sixteen, four, seventy, forty seven as follows, but then the total sixteen, eight, forty, seventy?
It does look like, am I unmute? I'm not on mute, okay. It does look like there's a typographical error on that. It will take me a moment to correct it. Or to figure out which number is right, unless Mr. O'Leary has his calculator here.
The.
Crusel doesn't even look like either one of them are right, but.
No, the total, uh, the total at the bottom, Mr. O'Leary is correct. The total at the bottom is off by twenty seven cents. The total sixteen thousand, eight forty, ninety seven.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. O'Leary, that's because you got numbers going through your mind with the seven thousand tax returns that still have to be done.
Sitting at my desk and I have a pile in front of me here.
Oh, boy.
Madam Chair, I'm just going through the bill directly. Bear with me one moment.
Take the lower number, pay the lower number.
Number is sixteen thousand, seventy seven cents.
No, no, it ends in ninety seven. If you take, you know, fifty times four is two hundred, less three cents is ninety seven, so it should end in ninety seven.
I just added them up and, yeah, again, I can do it one more time.
I believe the issue may be the subtotal, one of the subtotal numbers is wrong. When I'm reading off of the Copman Page Bill. Um, it looks like the number should be sixteen. Bear with me, sixteen thousand, seventy dollars and forty seven cents, sixteen zero seven zero forty seven.
Do you, should we correct one of the subtotal ones on this?
If we can vote the, the, yeah, if, if I can, it just may take me time to add, add up from the bills to get the right number and I don't want to.
Whatever you guys want to do. I'm just, I'm just reading off this.
We get approval.
Six oh four fifty, just make that, uh, six oh four.
Madam Chair, I'm going to ask you if we could approve it as a lump sum. In the total of. Sixteen thousand. Seventy dollars and forty seven cents.
Mr. Studo, yeah, motion, yeah.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for a lump sum of, for May twenty twenty. For sixteen thousand, seventy dollars and forty seven cents?
That'll be a four seventy, Michael.
From the bills themselves? Or from the subtotal?
Subtotal, what are they looking for, the, in the total?
So I'm, I'm reading from page twenty nine of the packet with the detail of the bill. Which is showing us a total of sixteen thousand, seventy dollars and forty seven cents.
So it seems like maybe that American arbitration, it's a four hundred dollar difference.
We normally appropriate the, the arbitration as a separate motion or is that, that's through Copman Page, correct?
No, we, we pay that directly, so that, that, I, that may be the issue.
Yeah, that's for, that's seventy five, three seventy five. It's two bills for seventy five and one for three seventy five in the packet.
That, that is the issue, yes. That should be voted. We'll vote, I would ask the board could vote that separately. I don't know why it got told in that fashion. It should not have been.
Excuse me, three twenty five is the statement, June tenth, and then seventy five is the statement, May twenty fifth. So that, that's the four hundred difference, right?
Correct.
Okay, so this is just for, the motion is just. Okay, so this is just for, the motion is just for the payment of the legal bills to Copman and Page for sixteen thousand, seventy dollars and forty seven cents, right? So that, so we'll separately move to pay the American arbitration statements. Right, so we have, I have driven, you did make that motion, Mr. Studo, do I have a second?
Second.
I guess.
Of a motion and a second by Mrs. Gonzalez, any further discussion, Mr. O'Leary? Mr. O'Leary's aye, Mr. uh Wallner?
Aye.
Mr., Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
And Manu Pelley is aye. And the second motion related to those arbitration invoices, which total four hundred dollars.
Madam Chair, I move to approve bills for May twenty twenty of four hundred dollars to American arbitration?
May twenty fifth? And um the bills of May twenty fifth as well as um.
June tenth.
June tenth. Seventy five and three twenty five to American Arbitration Association, I have a motion by Mr. Studo, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, Mr. O'Leary, you're on mute, by the way, I have a motion by Mr. Studo and a second by Mrs. Gonzalez, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr., Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
And Manu Pelley is aye. And, and that's it for those, those particular motions.
Nice catch there, Mr. Studo.
Yes.
I hope, I hope Mr. Studo's little thing here is not a public record or, I, I mean.
I've got a few of those, trust me.
I mean, this looks like, like the notes I take, I mean, this is, yeah. It's got all the relevant numbers, so I got.
Let's not reveal all of your secrets at once here, all right, so our next order of business is, is the Town Administrator's report, Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I do have two matters to report to the board this evening, the first is um related to the Police Department, uh Police Lieutenant Kevin Brennan, retired effective July second. Lieutenant Brennan has been a valued member of the North Reading Police Department for over twenty seven years, um his experience and his expertise will be difficult to replace. And although Lieutenant Brennan has decided to pursue other dreams on a full-time basis, he's asked to be considered for appointment as a PDM Reserve Police Officer. Purpose of the North Reading Police Reserve Program is to provide additional cadre of trained police personnel who employ police powers to further the efforts of the North Reading Police Department during routine and emergency operations. Um, it is my intention to appoint Lieutenant Brennan as a Reserve Police Officer this week. And as a result of his retirement, um which we had, the department had been planning for, and I know, um, Mr. O'Leary and Mrs. uh Manu Pelley, you're aware of his intentions as well, going back to our um discussions with that particular unit in the fall of last year. Uh but as a result of his retirement, Sergeant Joseph Thibodeau will be promoted to the rank of uh Lieutenant, and Detective Thomas Hatch will be promoted to the rank of Sergeant. They are scheduled to be sworn in um at uh um a small ceremony at the Police Department this coming Wednesday morning. Second, uh I wish to just highlight, and I know there was just some discussion at the last meeting by the organizer and some discussion at the beginning of this meeting, but there is an event that'll be taking place this Wednesday evening. Um, it will begin at Ipswich River Park in the parking lots, and will then proceed um by, by foot, as we understand it, from Ipswich River Park to the Common. Uh, described as an open invitation, peaceful protest with speakers, music, and marching from IRP to the Common. Uh, PPE and social distancing will be required, encouraging civic, civic engagement with voter forms and vol- voter registration forms and volunteer leaders. Uh, group identified itself as North Reading Youth for Anti-Racism. Uh, they had originally been looking to host the event um in the end of June, uh and then a, a final date was identified um for this coming Wednesday, they've advertised for attendees to arrive um uh no earlier than five thirty. Um, they're planning to have the speech at Ipswich River Park and then march from IRP to the Common, um, I believe, uh with a formal program beginning around six o'clock PM. And that concludes my comments under my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto, any questions? Seeing none, we will move on, old and new business, Mr. O'Leary, why don't you start us off?
Start us off by again congratulating Lieutenant Brennan, uh and I've known Kevin uh most of his life, he's younger than I am, and he's, uh, he's born and raised in North Reading and uh had been an integral part of the Police Department, as Town Administrator said, for twenty seven years, and an officer, Sergeant, Lieutenant for a good significant portion of that time here. Now Kevin's contributions, uh, you know, you may not have seen them all, but they're twenty four seven, and uh contributions were substantial, and I wish him well, I just hope his wife is prepared, you know, for having him home, and uh wish him a long and healthy and happy retirement, uh congratulations to Kevin, terrific fellow. And I'd also like to mention, you know, the retirement of um of Wayne Hardaker from the School Department, who uh many of you may have known him as the Superintendent of all the buildings for the School Department, and I'll tell you right now, the integral part that he played in, first of all, maintaining the old school, but building the new school and uh maintaining the new school and learning the intricacies of all the everything that goes into operating that school, which is unbelievable, everything from the package treatment plant to the uh, the uh heating and air, air conditioning system there is just unbelievable what had to be undertaken, and Wayne did a fantastic job. I would say always with a smile, but there was an awful lot of frustration over the years, again, he participated in the Secondary School Building Committee from the beginning. Uh, it still remains an active member of it, and again, his contributions uh to the School Department, the school system, and the children's school system has uh been extraordinary and a well-deserved retirement for, for Wayne, and wish him well too. That's all, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary, Mrs. Gonzalez?
I would also like to congratulate Lieutenant Brennan and thank him for his years of service to the town and to the people of North Reading, um I believe his son graduated with my daughter, if I remember correctly, so I, I do wish him well and thank him very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wallner?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mrs. Studo?
I'm good.
I'll just say again two congratulations to both, Mr. Harding and Lieutenant Brennan, and wish wish them the best, and thank them both for their service to the town. And I think that concludes our evening, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn?
Second, I have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Studo and a second by Mrs. Gonzalez, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
And Manu Pelley is aye, all right, thank you, folks, have a good night.
Have a great night, thank you.
Bye.